System, it will also be able to manage billing as well as data and outcomes. And then finally rebranding. So there is this continuous need to make the community aware of the valuable resources through Children's Service Fund, how to connect families with services, and how to lift up that awareness in the community. So we're hopeful that 2021 will be able to move forward with some of these initiatives. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you so much, Emily. At this point, I will turn it over to the committee for any questions that you have for Ms. Kanek.
Okay, well, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Days.
I'm going to start from the back and go move forward because I wanted to speak a little bit about this rebranding. What is, what is, what needs to be rebranded? And what is the initiative now that you use to utilize and get the information out to people? And so what does, what would that entail?
Yeah, so it's really traditional marketing. I think what we hear time and time again is that the community doesn't know about the resources or how to access those. And so it's building core messages around what CSF is, what we offer in the community. So right now, we use very traditional sources of media, social media, our agency update, which you all get every couple of weeks. You know, so some very traditional, lower level type engagement activities. And so what we've done in the past are marketing materials, you know, other education materials to help support what, help support messaging into the community about what the services are.
But actually, you're rebranding to agencies. You're not necessarily rebranding to individual citizens, are you?
So individual citizens will be a target audience, yes. It won't be specific to our agencies. It will be specific to the community, schools, the citizens, how they can access services and what services exist.
But your money goes to actual agencies to perform these kinds of services, correct?
That's correct. So we'll be creating an organizational message, and this is coming out of our organizational budget, not the program level funding.
Okay, what do you use now with, in terms of your grant management system? You don't have one now? Or do you have one now, or you're just looking?
Yeah.
Update or what?
Sure. So I, this is, this really predates me, but I think in the mid 2000s, we built a system internal here through an entity out in DC, and that has become unsustainable. To upgrade, it would cost, it was going to cost a significant amount of money, and we didn't have the faith and confidence that it was going to meet our needs because this vendor, you know, hadn't been meeting our needs for our grant making. It didn't have the function, they, and again, it was sort of piecemealed when it was put together. This predates anyone on my team currently. They started with the financial billing. They were supposed to do the grants management piece, and that was not fully comprehensively built out. And then the demographics and outcomes were to follow. So we did an assessment, a needs assessment in 2018, 2019, that really indicated to us that we needed to move to a system. So we're currently using that, that system for billing only, which we feel like it's sort of on its last legs. And it's really led to a lot of inefficiency in our organization and with our partner agencies. So that needs assessment lent itself to developing an RFP in collaboration with IT about what our needs were. So right now, we're using one system for billing, and then we have, we're using, for the 2020 core funding cycle, we used a temporary solution, Survey Monkey Apply, which we've also been using for the CARES humanitarian effort. So that was always temporary because it couldn't fulfill all of our needs until we evaluated the RFP and received approval of that. So we do have a system, but we do need to evolve with the technology so that we're more efficient, effective in our work, and that our grantees are more efficient and effective as well in their reporting and in their billing to us as well.
I want to move to your racial equity framework. We have, initially, we had a conversation, and I was concerned about the lack of resources that was in the African American community. You agreed with that at that particular time, that you needed to do a lot better. And so I, that was a year ago. So I need to know what has happened within that year to, I guess, get more agencies involved, and minority agencies involved in what you do, and particularly for the first. So that's, that's part A of that question.
So when we, when we spoke at that time, you know, obviously, racial equity was part, we're building our framework, which we're now entering into that RFP process. But also, what happened in 2019 is that our board approved an additional funding cycle for grassroots empowerment. So we were looking at organizations, smaller organizations, grassroots organizations who we know are serving the community, serving them well, maybe haven't, aren't able to necessarily apply for the core funding, not quite ready for that reimbursement model, maybe still testing some of their interventions and their support into the community. So our board approved that, oh, it was actually earlier this year. And of course, that was put on hold because of the COVID-19 pandemic and not really understanding where we were going to, our sales tax revenue was going to align. It's our intention to revisit that grassroots empowerment funding program now that we have a little bit of understanding about our revenue and that we will probably be able to fund additional funding opportunities. So I think we were looking at, you know, smaller grassroots organizations that we know are meeting the need of the community and, and just need, you know, some, some guidance through, through this funding.
So have you increased that number? I guess that was my question. Have you increased the number of minority participation, minority agencies that are accessing this money?
So these are nonprofits, so there's no minority ownership. There's no minority ownership, but, you know, we could certainly do an analysis of minority-led, both either through the board or through the executive director. But there's no minority or women business-owned nonprofit. And so we can't measure the, and increase in that.
No, they're not owned by that, but there are nonprofits that serve predominantly African American children. And so that was the reason for my question earlier on in the year. So let's, we'll put a pin in that one and come back a little later. Now, tell me, how does the three-year cycle versus the two-year cycle, what, what is that, what is the purpose of that? And how does that help the various agencies?
Yeah, I mean, I think it eliminates some of the administrative burden of continually, the application process. It takes a lot of time. On an, on average, it took about, it takes about 60 hours to do our application. And so it takes a lot of time, and that takes time away from, you know, potentially serving clients. And it takes a lot of time on our, our end as well, instead of being able to look at alternative funding cycles and, and having multiple funding cycles. It seems like we're always wrapping up one funding cycle and starting another, instead of really being able to get in and work with the community, work with the agencies, identify new and emerging innovative strategies and organizations to better serve our community. So I think this was definitely a win-win for us in terms of being able to have a little bit of breathing room to somewhat, do some of that, more of that outreach and engagement in the community and with other grassroots organizations in our community as well.
Okay, so let's move on to your COVID, your COVID, and the money that you have spent, was that the money that you received from the CARES Act, or that was from your budget?
That was true.
Looking at, I'm looking at your 2020 COVID-19 response, and it says CARES here. So you got the money for humanitarian from the CARES Act. Is that, is that right, or?
Absolutely. We did not receive money from CARES, no.
You did not receive money from CARES. So whatever you spent in all of these areas was your, your, your funds from the?
Yeah, it's through, two of them were through our existing contracts, so telehealth and the pro funding, and then the, the emergency funding came from, you know, our, our general, our revenue.
Well, I'm looking at, and I don't know, there's no page here, but it says the Childcare Relief Program, and I put a star by that. So the monies that went to the different daycare centers, was that administered through your department? The CARES money was administered to your department? Or was that your money that you spent on early childhood education?
No, that, that was the CARES funding. We provided the infrastructure and the support to those programs through, through CARES.
So that, so then you received the money to implement that?
We didn't, no, we did not receive it. We're in collaboration with DHS, DHS, and so, you know, there, they provide, that funding is going through them, through the county to, we did not receive any money.
So your, your role in that was to look at the applications, I'm assuming, and make the determinations about who received the money? Is that what this relief program did?
Yeah, so a couple of different, we had a couple of different strategies. So with the main first humanitarian response program, we utilized DHS staff, CSF staff, and external community reviewers. We worked in collaboration with St. Louis Mental Health Board to identify them, train those community reviewers, and conduct the review process. And so those recommendations came from merit-level staff as well as community reviewers.
Okay, I'm not being clear, obviously, in my questioning. When the childcare centers applied for funding from COVID CARES Act money, what did you do?
And, and Emily, before you answer that, Councilwoman Days, I just want to remind you that the process for providing oversight over the distribution and spending of CARES Act money is, is through our Oversight Committee. And so we really need, I agree, this is an important topic, but we really need to stick to the 2021 budget.
I am trying to do that, Madam Chair, but I need to know what has transpired in that. And I'm aware that we have not had an Oversight Committee in several weeks. So we're, we're ending the, the cycle for this. And so I just kind of want to know, it's, it's here in her budget analysis, or I would not have brought it up, but the Childcare Relief Program is part of her presentation. So that's why I'm asking these questions about that specifically.
Okay, I just want to be mindful of, of how this meeting was noticed, because we didn't even notice to the public that we were going to be excavating and providing oversight for CARES Act money. So I want to watch on there.
Well, it's in her, right, thank you. But it's in her presentation, which is why I ask. So Emily?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to answer that question. And I provided the context of the CARES to inform the committee about what we've been doing as part of our COVID-19 response. So our goal has always been to ensure that resources get out to the community and those people who need the services and supports get them. So under the CARES Childcare Program, that was an entitlement program. So they were eligible to apply up to a certain amount based upon their capacity. What we did internally here as a staff is review their budgets to make sure they were in alignment with what, what were eligible expenses. And we approved it based upon, and those were generally approved. I believe everybody was approved for something, to my knowledge, if they were eligible, if they, you know, were a childcare within St. Louis County. But again, that was a request. They submitted their budget. We reviewed that budget, sent out an award letter and moved forward with that.
Okay, one last question, and I want to make sure I'm understanding, that you have $20 million in reserve?
Correct.
Okay, and, and how was that determined, that that was the amount that you would put in reserve?
So that was determined by our board, you know, and it's a number that predates me, but I can tell you that every year, our board has voted, and that really represents about half of what we receive in any given year. So, and it equates to about three to six months of billing by our agencies. And so that's kind of a standard. We did an analysis of, you know, standard operating reserves, and generally, an organization would want to have between three and six months. So that, that's what $20 million represents to us. Our agencies bill between five and, you know, $6 million a month pre-COVID. But again, that, that was established pre-me, but we continue to share that research with our board, and they vote on that reserve every January.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all the questions that I have at this point. Let me come back later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Harder, you have the floor.
Emily, what is your budget based on, from the standpoint of your population that you serve, of people under 19 years old? And do you see that population growing or reduced?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. I mean, I think we, our intent, and when we allocate our funds, is to allocate as much into the community as is determined by community need. You know, my general understanding of the demographics in St. Louis County is that they're kind of, you know, stagnant or maintaining. So there's no cost per child that we implemented in, when we decide how much to allocate. It's really based upon a number of different factors, what, what our revenue projections will be, and what we think, you know, will be allocated, you know, by the board. So there are a number of different factors. There's no cost per child that we apply to our funding. And I may have not answered your question, but...
Yeah. How many children do you serve?
So we talked about this last year, you know, and it's, they can receive multiple services. So a child could be, you know, receiving counseling and prevention programming in the school. So when we drill down on the numbers, it's 253,000 kids. But again, it's, it's hard because we don't have a unique client identifier, so we're not tracking kids across the county. But that's something we're hopeful that we can move towards more progress with a new data management system, grants management system, that will be able to extrapolate the data in a, in a better way to give you a better estimate on the number of children served total. Again, I provided some statistics on the, the prior pages. But again, a child could be receiving counseling, substance use treatment, and be connected to other resources through their school, such as prevention programming as well. So there's a number of different factors.
So right now, under your current system, 253,000 is number of touches or services to children? So your children could be less than that?
Yeah, can I, can I follow up with you on that? And I can, I can check with our data and performance analyst, who's wrapping up some data, and we'll, we'll, we'll try to get you a number on the number of touches on different services.
Okay. And are your vendors that are under your program, do you see them increasing or decreasing because of COVID and, and other factors in the, in the marketplace?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, they, they've maintained pretty consistently throughout the years. Those numbers don't vary greatly. But again, I think with some of our potential alternative funding, we may be able to bring other organizations into the fold to help support and build up some of those new interventions, support organizations who may not be ready for our traditional core funding, provide more technical assistance, and get them to a place where, you know, we, there could be some sustained funding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I have a couple things, Emily. First of all, I want to acknowledge you and your staff and board, and all you have done over the past few months as part of the county's relief efforts for COVID. This pandemic has imposed a lot on county government, and we all have stepped up in big ways, and you all are no exception to that. So I want to recognize the hard work that you and your staff have put in, especially to help respond to the needs of, of children and families. So thank you for that sincerely. My one question for you is, do you all have any unfunded priorities?
No, not currently. You know, I think we strategically look at, you know, what our priorities are, and I'm not sure if I froze. Everybody else froze.
You're here.
Okay, sorry. Okay, great. Sorry. So we strategically look at our, you know, priorities for the year and are able to work within our existing budget, you know, generally making decisions about where we want to focus our effort as it's in alignment with our strategic plan. So no, not currently at this time do we have any unfunded priorities.
That was my question. Anyone else? Anyone we didn't hear from?
If no one else, Madam Chair, I have one more question, please?
Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
You, with the, with the money that you have reserved, is that money invested? And what happens with the, I guess, the interest that you glean from that, if it is?
It is. It's invested through St. Louis County, so there's some restrictions on that. We can't, you know, privately invest those funds. So that's about $700,000 a year that goes to help, you know, support our administrative budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there are no further questions or comments from Ms. Kanek, we will move on to our next presentation, because we have a whole afternoon. So let's keep going. Thank you, Emily. We appreciate it.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Up next, we have the Assessor's Office. Is the Assessor's Office here, Chris? Oh, I think I see a, I think I see the assessor. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and get them connected?
Great. I'm not sure that all of my team is logged in yet. They want to give a moment for everybody to show up?
Yeah, we can, we can sit tight for a minute.
Well, I'm looking at our participants list here, and actually, I think we, at this point, we do have everybody slated to join us. So I'll introduce for everyone's benefit the three members of my senior staff who are here today, and that's Sandy Utsi, who's my deputy assessor and chief administrative manager, Sarah Siegel, who is our external affairs manager, and is lucky as to be first point of contact with your offices on both citizen concerns and elected official and community leader concerns. And finally, Tom Kendrick, who some of you may know from his prior role as the deputy CIO of all of St. Louis County, but who came back to his old home in the Assessor's Office about a year ago, and who assists us with a variety of systems and processes and making sure that the show doesn't fall apart. And they'll, they'll be here to answer substantive and technical questions as, as need be. And if all of you are ready, I'll go ahead and make the presentation.
All right. Well, I think the council is ready, so go ahead and go for it.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thanks, council members. As those of you who have had the questionable pleasure of sitting through me doing this before know, I do have a tendency to get verbose, so I would try to keep it as tidy as I can. And while I'm sure you're all fascinated by the finer points of my budget, if history is any guide, I bet that one or two of you will have questions about reassessment next year. So I'll make sure to leave as much time as feasible at the end so that we can talk about the substantive stuff as well as the money. All right, so the basics, you all know what we do, but for the sake of the record, right, we reassess property every two years. So while we're in charge of telling you what your stuff is worth, which means your home, the dirt that your home sits on, and any vehicles or livestock that move around on that dirt, we look at the vast majority of property and by state law determine if there's been a change in the value of that property every two years. And this is the second year of that two-year cycle. So in 2021, it will be our job to come up with new values for all the real estate in St. Louis County, and then to hear from property owners who, who may have information to bring our attention about that, first informally, then formally through an appeals process. We follow a variety of state law as well as county ordinance in doing that. And our core job is to be fair and to be accurate. Our job is not to get tax dollars for any municipality or for any school district or any prior district. Our job is not to protect any set of values or anything else like that. Our job is to figure out what the stuff is worth, what it could sell for in the open market, and to treat similarly situated property owners similarly. And all of this, of course, is required by state law, and biennial reassessment is a creature of state statute. We don't do stuff that is discretionary. In addition to the top-line stuff that you see us do, we also manage some other critical functions, like maintaining the parcel fabric, which is what underlies the, the mapping and the pretty pictures, and what actually enables the county's addressing functions, which matters for what we do, but it also matters for the likes of 911 and so forth. We process certificates of value, which is what happens when you, when you sell your home and you have to disclose to the county how much you sold it for. There's a variety of other functions like that. But the most important thing to understand, because I know this is a time of budget cuts, and I know this is a time where you are asking general revenue-funded departments questions about, you know, what could you get rid of? What services do you provide that in a bad scenario would get cut to the bone? You know, if the good news about us is that we're separately funded, and you don't have to worry about our separate little fund in the same way that you do about general revenue, the other side of that coin is that basically everything that we do is state mandated. And that means that if I were to screw up the budget, and if I were to not be a good fiscal steward of our resources, I'd have no one to blame but myself, and we would be in a world of hurt because of the statutorily mandated functions that we by necessity and by requirement perform. So about that careful fiscal stewardship, as those of you who have been on the council for some time will be aware, the assessment fund is a little unusual in county government in that it has a multimillion-dollar fund balance, and that's because we've been hyper, hyper conservative with the assessment fund even in good times. When I first came into this office, there had been a multi-years pattern in the decade before of the assessment fund being on a concerning downward path. And like I said before, if the assessor were to start spending down that money and go on the downward trend line, you know, there is no magic rescue boat waiting on the horizon. So we routinely underspend the budget that you give us to the tune of $2 or $3 million, and have done so pretty consistently in good years in the past. The other thing to remind everybody about is that our budgeting takes place based on a two-year comparison process. If you want to get apples to apples in looking at how we spend our money, you want to look at the budget for this year as compared against the budget two years ago. We are a seasonal business. We cost a lot more in a reassessment year. The reason for that is that 75% of what we do, what we spend money on, is people. We are a heavily people-focused agency. And so even though we have a great, great many vacancies, I mean, you know, we're, we're budgeted on an org chart for something on the order of 180 people, and at present, we have a full 54 FTE vacancies, right? And that's just the reality of the fact that in the times that we are in, if I filled all those vacancies, we'd spend down the fund balance in a matter of a blink. But you will find that the amount of human beings that we spend money on does get bigger in a reassessment year, and that's largely a function of seasonal and intermittent workers, along with sometimes we have retirees come back and help out. we have retirees come back and help out, and some other miscellaneous expenses there. So if you, if you take a look at the numbers that we have before you for 2021, you'll see a proposed budget of about $15.8 million. And you will see, like I said, that that is roughly $1 million north of the budget that you approved for us in 2020. And that's sort of consistent with years past in the sense that us costing an extra million in a reassessment year is about right. But I want to emphasize to you that under no circumstances are we actually going to spend $15 million. If I did that, we would, we would start going broke very, very quickly. You can look at our real-world expenditures for the past decade, and you can see what I mean there. With that said, however, there are some legit changes in the number that you see in front of you, both when you're comparing apples to apples against 2019, and also when you're comparing against 2020. In both cases, you will see single-digit percent increases. And sometimes those increases don't really mean it because we're not filling positions. But in this case, there are a couple of ways that we really are spending more money, and I want to alert you to them so you're sort of aware of what's going on. The first thing is the, and this, this is the biggest part of it by far, like roughly half of the change in the budget, is coming from us picking up responsibility for positions previously funded by other departments. Every member of this council has heard me whining for years about the less-than-ideal nature of the relationship between the county's GIS department and the Assessor's Office and the mutual services that we all have to provide due to a variety of, let's call it, bad bureaucratic history. You don't want me to go into the details of it at gory lengths. But suffice it to say that due to a combination of personalities and non-ideal org chart decisions, we had a situation where some of the basic needs of the county and of our taxpayer-supported function just were getting left by the wayside at potential risk to the people we serve. Go back to what I was telling you about the addressing, for example. At some point, if the addressing falls apart, that means public safety and 911 falls apart. And, you know, the work just wasn't getting done. And with the significant help of our peers in other parts of county government and management in my staff, including especially Tom Kendrick, who's here with us today, we've found some ways mutually to work in a more cooperative way and fix some of these problems. But as part of that, I reached the reluctant conclusion that I needed to put on my big boy pants and step up and pay for more of the solution directly out of my budget. If I'm going to complain about other pieces of county government not getting the work done, especially in times like these where every dollar is tight, sometimes it's better to just say, you know what? We can't afford to pay for it, and we'll take on responsibility for more of that cartography staff. And I'm pleased to say that so far, we're getting good results, not just in terms of the cartography and the complex deed work actually getting done, but also in terms of everyone getting along with each other a little bit better and having some better systems and workflow. So I'm genuinely encouraged by that. And if the price of poker to do that is a couple hundred thousand dollars in the scheme of this budget, and particularly when I know it would be unrealistic to ask other parts of county government to, to pick up that burden, I feel pretty good about it. Similarly, you should know, and this is less formalized, it's just a matter of us doing the right thing rather than being squirmy about it, we're providing a lot of service to our peers in the Department of Revenue right now. Roughest would be about 40% of Tom's time that I introduced to you before, as well as 40% of the time of Bob Veach, a longtime county IT employee whose salary we now pay for all of, is really spent taking care of the collector's office and related functions in the director of revenue's office. So in principle, should I be sending them a bill for that time? Maybe. But in practice, you guys have enough general revenue needs to worry about right now. And my concern is that all of the core public service functions don't fall on their face. The collector's office runs on the same software that we run on. It's called IAS. You don't care about the details of IAS. Suffice it to say that we spend a lot of money on it, and we need it. And without IAS, the county's real estate records fall apart, but also the collector's office's cashiering falls apart. So in some cases, especially right now, it's just easiest for us to provide that function. Similarly, as I think you all know, we fund a bunch of positions in the collector's office that are based on the ground floor, or at least they were fully based on the ground floor in the olden days, but still a lot of that public service that people are going through. You know, when you come in to do business with the county, and you think you are there for a tax-related function, about half the time, it's to pay a tax bill, and about half the time, it's to deal with a personal property declaration issue. And what that means is that in bureaucratic language, half the time, it's somebody else's problem, and half the time, it's my problem. But it would be stupid, and it would be bad public policy to stick a wall up down there and say, be on this side of the line if you need help with, you know, an administration problem, and be on this side of the line if you need help with an assessor problem, right? It's bad public service. We're not going to do it. It's better for me to just pay for a bunch of positions in the collector's office, train everybody to do both jobs, and we will continue. So with all of that yacking about staff, that doesn't account for all of the difference in the budget. The other thing you should know is that there is a significant amount of money budget in there for professional fees, and that takes a couple of different aspects. So let's talk about them. The biggest piece of it by far, software consulting. We've got $250,000 worth of software consulting in there. That is a big chunk of change. All of that is about dealing with our vendor, Tyler Technologies. You know Tyler because the county pays for lots of stuff from them. But remember what I said to you before about IAS, the software that we all desperately depend on. IAS is Tyler, and Tyler is IAS. And there is some outdated stuff in IAS that badly needs to be fixed. And again, it goes back to the interplay between our shop and the Department of Revenue, in this case, the Recorder of Deeds Office. And there are some significant issues with the timely processing and recording of deeds, and that doesn't just affect them upstream. That comes to us downstream. When you transfer property and you record a deed, you're dealing with the administration. You're dealing with something that the county executive is responsible for. But the certificate of value that goes with that deed is something that the county assessor is responsible for. And then the, making the requisite changes to the plaques and the parcel fabric and everything else is also something that the assessor is responsible for. So it's another one of those places where we have a big need to make them work more smoothly with one another. And everyone is happier if I just suck it up and pay for it and devote some of our tech resources to solving the problems. And that's sort of a running theme through all of this stuff. And I imagine it may come as a little bit of a surprise to some of my peer elected officials here, but I hope not, right? Whatever anyone's individual political disagreements may be, my office and the broader administration are joined at the hip. We stay joined at the hip. It's a function of going back to the days before the assessor was even an elected official, right? And my commitment and what I have seen from the administration, their commitment as well, is that everybody wants to work together to serve the taxpayers and do it right. So I'm real encouraged by that, and we will, we will keep working in exactly that cooperative fashion. The other piece of professional services that I know you guys always want to know about, so I'll highlight it for you, even though we're actually spending less money on it this year than last year, is litigation, right, is where we put money into outside counsel. And I want to give a shout out to, to the county councillor and to her office for doing some really creative and proactive thinking, working with us in terms of reallocating resources within the councillor's office and trying to get us the legal service that we need to fight not just the big cases, the stuff that you hear from me about, but the routine workaday stuff that we deal with day in and day out. I think most members of this council by now have had the questionable pleasure of meeting the tax representatives who make a lot of money off of representing property owners and especially corporate property owners in dealing with our office. And as some of you know, those tax representatives are largely, I mean, they're in it to make a buck. They're in it to make a contingency fee on behalf of their clients, and they'll exploit the system if the system is made exploitable for them. And they'll play games if games are there to be played. This county councillor's office has been a partner in working proactively with us to fight back against some of those games, and it's really encouraging. A consequence of that is that we anticipate having to spend a little less money on outside counsel next year than we did in years past, because things have been going pretty well on the two things that I like to characterize as the "bet the company" cases. And I've talked to you before about them, so I won't go in, you know, great length. But to remind you, one set of those cases is the so-called ratio cases. The so-called ratio cases are effectively class-action litigation, in which the tax representatives don't say, hey, Zimmerman, you, you made my client's property value too high, and they deserve a tax refund because the value should go down. Instead, they say, hey, Zimmerman, we think maybe you valued everybody else in town too low, and so even though my client's value is fair, maybe you should give me a break anyway. I have long believed that those cases are nonsense, but in the past, due to a combination of bad litigation and sometimes bad facts on the ground, the Assessor's Office didn't always do so well in those cases. But that hasn't been the case. Particularly this past year, we've got a strikingly positive tax rec, excuse me, track record. And in doing that, we've protected not just school districts and fire departments who, in my judgment, would otherwise be forced to give up an unfair windfall to, to some of these corporate tax rep firms. But, but more to the point, it's based fairness, because what we've done is we've protected the system for those taxpayers who aren't paying for the lawyers in the Gucci suits and who expect and anticipate that their appeal will get heard fairly, and that their property will be valued based on what they can sell it for and nothing else. So I'm real excited about our recent history of success there, and I hope and expect it will continue. The other one, which I know members of this council have had the pleasure of hearing lots of sound and fury about, is the attempt by one or two of those tax rep firms to try to sue the county for attorney's fees, largely as a strategic measure, because they think if they can somehow get us over a barrel, then we'll have to start giving them settlements that they want, and they won't have to do the work on behalf of their clients. There's nothing they would like more than to get some free money without having to do the work. And as a consequence, we, we litigate those things tooth and nail, and we will continue to litigate those things tooth and nail for the sake of protecting the taxpayers and protecting everybody who isn't trying to game the system. So the bottom line is that while I'm, I'm pretty excited that we hope cautiously optimistic, fingers crossed, to spend less taxpayer money on outside counsel next year, I, I want very much to keep winning, and I do expect to, to see through the course of this litigation. Having won in the tax commission and in the lower courts, it's now our job to press things through to the finish. And then hopefully, it makes it less likely that I ever have to come back to you and ask for further changes in ordinances and whatnot if we can just win in court the old-fashioned way. All right, let's see. Let's talk a little bit more about the technology, not just because I'm spending more money there next year, but for the obvious reality that technology matters a whole lot more in a time of COVID and lockdowns. You know, compared to last year, our tech budget is essentially flat. There's, you know, $600,000 including all the hardware and software and software maintenance. But again, that, you know, that conceals a whole lot of work being done by people who we brought back into this shop, who are providing services to other parts of county government, especially the Department of Revenue and not just us. Like everybody else, we had to work on the fly real quick to transition to an online environment in the early days of COVID quarantine. And I'll give my team a little bit of a pat on the back because what they've achieved there is really quite remarkable. And the degree to which we were able to handle off-year appeals in a remote and online environment, and the degree to which we've been able to continue to do our fieldwork, to get permits from the municipalities and the public works department, get the staff out there, looking at properties, doing the necessary measurement, but doing it in a way that doesn't cause necessary contact with taxpayers, and doing it in a no-touch, no-contact environment. That's a delicate balance, right? Because you don't want me putting taxpayers at risk, but you also don't want me doing drive-by assessments. And how many times have I promised the people of this county that it'll never happen on my watch? It's a trickier beast to manage in times like these, but we are. And it's, it's neat to watch it happening. Those of you who've been on the council for some years will remember that I have, my oldest saw is, I swear to you, I'm going to spend some money on putting field devices in the hands of the appraisers, so they don't have to sketch property with pencil and paper, so they can do the data entry themselves on a tablet and get it done. And my running not-so-funny joke has always been, next year. It'll always happen next year. I'm sure it'll happen next year. Well, guess what? This is the year it finally happened. And even some of the dinosaurs, even some of the folks who I think would have been most resistant to change, have been excited about it. Not just because we're in the middle of a pandemic, not just because we have to do more stuff electronically and remotely, but because it just appears to be working. And my experience is that folks are really, really excited about it. And that has been a great thing to see. So I do expect that to continue. I, before I continue, I can't help but notice a frozen screen here, and I would welcome a check in to just make sure that, okay, I see, I see movement again. Everyone's hearing me all right? Thank you, Councilwoman. All right. So then, finally, let's transition into the subject that I suspect you're most interested in, which is Board of Equalization hearings, customer service, and how we do it in the strange new world. Rough approximation, we had about 27,000 appeals in 2019. And we also had a fair amount of public attention, a little more so than a normal year. And I think that was largely because the economy was going great. And when the economy is going great, homes generally are worth more money, and commercial real estate is generally worth more money. And market data shows it's selling for more, and that means values go up. And any of you who attended a town hall meeting with me two years ago knows some of the kinds of public sentiment that that leads to. This time around, best guess, on average, property values have been continuing to go up, but nothing like the gangbusters way that it was two years ago, and in no way consistently like it was two years ago. Two years ago, you had a rising tide essentially lifting all boats in terms of the value of property. Basically, all property throughout St. Louis County was worth a lot more than it was two years earlier. This time around, for obvious reasons, common sense will tell you that it's not true across the board, talk to any Realtor, and they'll tell you that houses are selling pretty well. This is a pretty good time to own a $200,000 house. If you own a $200,000 house, the odds are pretty good that it's worth more than it was two years ago. This is a really good time to own a late-model SUV. Nice, used cars are selling like hotcakes on the market. Auto dealers will complain they can't even buy any at the auction. So we have this strange phenomenon that I haven't seen since the depths of the foreclosure crisis, since the time of cars for clunk, or cash for clunkers, when I first became assessor, which is used cars going up in value compared to a year ago. But with that said, you don't need me to tell you that this is not a great time to own a restaurant, and it is not a great time to own a hotel, and it is not a great time to own a variety of different pieces of real estate and, and personal property. So that's going to result in some inconsistency in terms of what folks see with the various pieces of property that they own. And if history is a guide, it will also result in some emotions and some strong feelings. A number of our peers and our taxpayers and our constituents are facing once-in-a-generation, once-in-a-lifetime struggles, and we all have to be incredibly mindful of that. And some of that burden ultimately falls, to some extent, on you and more so on the state legislature, right? Because the state law tells us to value the property. Because uh the state law tells us to value the property for what it can be sold for. And that's what we are going to do. Um, but if you think that uh unhappy senior citizens on a fixed income staring at a uh rising tax bill. If you thought they were unhappy two years ago, just wait till this coming year. And this would be a great time, if you'll forgive me a small piece of policy advocacy, for all of us um to join together in talking to our colleagues in the legislature. And I would especially like for them to hear from both Democrats and Republicans in sort of the same voice. It's time for the state to bring back the homestead credit. It's time for the state to be more robust with the circuit breaker. It's time for our colleagues in the legislature to say that in a civilized society, nobody gets taxed out of their home when they're a senior citizen on a fixed income. Um, and if the legislature won't have the guts to do what needs to be done there, then you and I know what will happen, right? People will come howling to you and you don't have the money to give them in your budget to authorize solving this problem. So one way or the other, this problem has got to get solved and I really do think um without uh without maybe rendering too much more editorial judgment about what the county's own budget can or can't support. I can certainly tell you what I'd like to see happen at the state level and I hope some of you will join me in that advocacy. Um, thinking specifically about the Board of Equalization process. Um, regardless of how emotions may or may not run high and regardless of what actually happens with property values. Our job is pretty straightforward. Our job is to value the stuff for what it's actually selling for. And then our job is to give everybody their chance to be heard. Uh, and that means we have a lot of work to do and we're doing it right now on putting together a robust electronic infrastructure. And how we make sure that folks, including those members of the public who are just not as comfortable hopping on a WebEx as you or I may be. Uh, to make sure that they still have a way that they can get their information in front of an appraiser and in front of an hearing officer. So they can get their ten minutes and talk about why their kitchen hasn't been updated. And why we're valuing them based on the property next door that does have the updated kitchen. Um, that's a little easier when you can shove some photos across the table to an appraiser. Not everyone's going to be able to upload a bunch of documents on a uh secure county website. So we need to figure out multiple paths for public service there. And then on the other side of the fence, as you know, the um the administration is responsible for the Board of Equalization and the Board of Equalization in turn pays for a whole bunch of hearing officers who hear the vast majority of those individual appeals. And not all of them are going to be the most tech-sophisticated people either. Making sure that we make it work so that there's no wrong door to walk through. Whether it's for those people who absolutely positively need to find a way to show up in person and we're going to have to put them in a socially distant workspace and stick a pair of headphones on them and if necessary have clerical staff push the buttons for them. Right? Or doing stuff we haven't done before, like potentially having telephone hearings or other things that will require us working closely with our colleagues in the Department of Revenue and the Board of Equalization. Uh, we're open to all kinds of new changes, but the bottom line is we've got to make space for everybody to get heard. Because I'm quite sure there will be plenty of people wanting informal conferences and plenty of people wanting to file appeals. Um, to that end, um, I hereby commit myself to doing the same thing that I did with most of the members of this council two years ago, which is you tell me where you want me for that town hall meeting and I'll be there. And some of it, and indeed much of it, may well be electronic this time around as opposed to going to Jefferson Barracks or what have you. But whatever circumstances on the ground permit. Um, what I don't want is I don't want any of you or your staff or my staff getting yelled at by people for stuff that taxpayers may poorly understand. Right? Uh, you all have seen me do this before and I will do it again. Let's uh let's go talk to the people that we serve. Let's help them understand the process. And let's make sure that the folks who are scared, and there's going to be a lot of scared people this time around, get the resources they need, get the information they deserve to have to help navigate through the process. So that nobody gets stuck with an unfair tax bill because the property was valued wrong. And they thought they would have to fight City Hall or they thought they couldn't navigate the process. Um, one final thing that's worth saying on that subject that we need to all keep our eyes on. Um, we have a brand-new Board of Equalization this year. The county executive um picked three new people and did not leave us with any transition from the uh the former board members. And the board, uh which appears to me to be a well-intentioned bunch of folks, is also still a little bit green. And things therefore didn't go quite as quick as they otherwise would have during the off-year appeals this past year. And so uh we're going to have to work very, very tightly and very, very cooperatively to make sure, number one, that the process doesn't fall apart. But also remember our friends, the tax representatives. If given an opportunity to take advantage of new leadership, they will do so. If given an opportunity to game the system, they will do so. If given an opportunity to get unfair or windfall uh tax reductions or value reductions, they will do so. Uh, so we're going to have to be more vigilant on that score than ever before. Uh, as you know, the voters changed the St. Louis County Charter to authorize, at least in principle, the prospect of additional boards of equalization, which potentially creates more hearing slots and lessens the burden. Though at a budgetary cost to general revenue that uh may be a tricky issue for you guys. The only thing I'll sort of ask of all of you is that to whatever extent the county ultimately goes in that direction, if you do choose down the road to authorize additional boards of equalization, additional folks. Um, help join me in encouraging the administration to make sure we have as much expertise as possible. Uh, we need folks who know what they are doing. Uh, fortunately, I haven't seen much example either in this Board of Equalization or the prior Board of Equalization of political nonsense or favoritism to who appointed them, playing games for one side or the other or what have you. But that's the thing that we've got to uh keep and I'm I'm grateful to the administration for upholding that standard here. Right? Because these are the kinds of appointments that it's really, really important they don't go to your buddy. It's important that these kinds of appointments go to people who understand residential and commercial real estate. And who are prepared to act fairly and neutrally on behalf of all the taxpayers. Um, anyway, I think as usual, I have said more than enough. So uh I'll stop jabbering here and why don't we talk about what you want to hear about instead of what I want to talk about?
Thank you, Jake. Um, we appreciate your your thorough and in-depth um presentation. And I will definitely um turn it over to my fellow council members for any questions and comments they may have for you or your staff. Uh, yes, is that Councilman Fitch? Oh, Councilman Harder, go ahead.
Yes, uh. You have these additional boards of equalization. Uh, how many will there be? How many people on those boards? And what will be the cost to your budget to staff and to uh keep those boards going for the next two years?
So all that is up to you, Councilman. Um, we, at the moment, we only have one Board of Equalization. As I understand it, the voters changed the charter to permit the county. If the county wants to pass an ordinance, you know, to establish further boards of equalization, then in principle you can do that. I'm not entirely clear and we may need the councillor's office's guidance on whether some sort of state legislative ascent is or is not needed to do that. Or whether you just have the power to snap your fingers and pass an ordinance and get it done. Um, but the the Board of Equalization is paid for out of general revenue. And uh the real money is less the board and more the hearing officers that represent them. So in principle, could you hire another Board of Equalization and have, you know, one for residential property and one for commercial property, for example? You could, right? Right now, your current Board of Equalization is mostly folks who with a sophistication in residential real estate. And we've lost some of the commercial expertise that we had under the prior board. Right? So if you chose to create a second board for commercial properties and they didn't hire new hearing officers and you just had that board. You know, you could do it for pretty cheap because you pay those board members by the hour. But whether that's uh worth your buck is ultimately, I think, a question for you and the policymakers in the administration. But I will happily offer my opinions if and when asked.
Well, I'm asking those, how many, how many boards do we need and do we need to have them segregated by profession?
Um, if it were me, I would say if if it can be done without huge expense, I think it would be interesting to try two boards rather than one. I think it might be impractical and crazy with all the other changes we're making on the fly here to try for more than that. How you structure it, um, whether there should be one residential board and one commercial board or structuring it in some other fashion. I think I would leave to your wisdom and the Director of Revenue's wisdom. The one thing I would strongly say is I'd really like to see some good, solid, neutral commercial real estate expertise on uh um whatever the structure looks like, right? The the prior Board of Equalization, um, say what you will about the former county executive, but the one place that Steve Stanger did a surprisingly good job of putting good, neutral, nonpartisan people was that Board of Equalization. And you had a couple of people on that board who were really sophisticated on commercial real estate. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't care where they come from, I don't care what their politics are and I don't care who appoints them. Just find me one or two people who are really smart about commercial real estate and will do a much better job of treating all the taxpayers fairly.
Finally, is it your understanding that it's the county executive to those people for our council or for your department?
It's the county executive who appoints members of the Board of Equalization. You don't want me appointing them. We have a uh a separation of powers there. They're kind of like the judge that sits in judgment over the values that we put forward. But if our office is consulted, you know, remember that our office is chock-full of professional appraisers and people who are sophisticated about property appraisal. And if uh if the county executive saw fit to solicit opinions from the professional, nonpartisan staff in my office, I think they could supply lists of potential people uh that would be long and deep. And I, again, I'd I'd welcome offering that expertise if asked. But the last thing I want to do is get into the business of suggesting who to appoint because for obvious reasons, I think you should leave me out of it.
Do you need those, that boards to stand up?
Um, I think if we're going to have a second Board of Equalization, if we're going to have new folks, uh, it would be a matter of the sooner the better, right? We uh board hearings start in the late spring, early summer of next year. But there's a great deal of training and preparation and work that has to be done beforehand. And as it stands right now, the current board, again, because they all came in new and green, so the result was it took a few months to stand them up during the pandemic. And there's now a pretty significant backlog of them hearing, for example, exemption petitions from not-for-profit organizations that want to keep their charitable exemption. So don't be surprised if you and your fellow council members start hearing complaints from charities saying, why did I get a tax bill this year? No one's acted on my exemption petition. Right? It's not the new board's fault. They were just thrown into the deep end of the pool rather abruptly. But the result of that is that they remain to amongst backlog of those things. So to avoid future backlogs like that, I would say that, yeah, if the council decides that you want to have a second board uh and the councillor's office tells you that that's a thing you can go ahead and do without other legislative approval, I would encourage you strongly, the sooner the better.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
Thank you. Um, Jake, you mentioned a couple of of uh things that kind of hit me there. We're talking about the fifty-four vacancies that you have. Uh, I I think that was the number. And then, and then also I I pivoted quickly to the drive-by assessments. Uh, and and with your lack of personnel, how are you, are are you able, and I guess you will in some some point, how are you able to make those assessments if you're if you're fifty-four people down?
Well, we're fifty-four people down from what the office was structured for from the good old days when the state legislature gave uh all of the counties, not just this one, full reimbursement on a per parcel basis for the true cost of biennial uh reassessment. The reality is that the state shortchanges St. Louis County by about a million dollars a year on that. And I didn't go into at length where our money comes from. But our uh our former colleagues in the legislature have not done the right thing there and there has been litigation over the years. And I'm sure you are shocked, yes, shocked, to know that the Missouri Legislature would ever underfund a critical priority. So, yeah, because because of that, we've we've had to do more with less over the years. But let me be clear, I have an ironclad commitment that as long as I am the county assessor, there will never, ever be any such thing as a drive-by assessment on my watch. Now, two years ago, what did that mean? Two years ago, in relatively short order, as you may recall, we had to do in-person field visits to roughly a hundred thousand properties throughout St. Louis County. And uh we did every single one of them. Um, wasn't easy. It involved more than just paying overtime, more than just having every appraiser out there in the field. We had personal property staff in the field. We had supervisors in the field. We had lawyers in the field. We had me ringing doorbells and not asking people for their vote, but asking people if I could take the tape measure and walk around their home. Now, am I cautiously optimistic that I won't need to bust out the tape measure this year? Yes, I am. I don't think that um the change in values will be as significant this time as it was two years ago. But if I'm wrong about that and if we need to do that much field work, even in a remote, no-contact environment, we will do it. And it's it's sort of like, um, it's sort of like the same issue with uh the hearings at the Board of Equalization, right? Where you get long hours, you get grumpy staff. Uh, you always have one or two bad customer service situations where someone's had too long of a day and they say something that they shouldn't to a taxpayer. You may remember that a couple of years ago, a Board of Equalization member quit rather abruptly complaining that it was too much work. Uh, well, we complain that it's too much work too, but we do it on our own time. And uh our commitment is to get the job done and get everybody heard and get every property visited. Uh, and the reason for that is pretty simple, um, which is take a look at Jackson County, take a look at Kansas City. Um, they had their uh share of scan assessor's office over the last couple of years. And at core, it was because they were so underfunded that, yeah, they just didn't have enough appraisers to go out there and do the job. So they chose not to do it. Um, they chose to fund other priorities. And the result was that some properties didn't get visited and some properties didn't get reappraised. We will never do that. We will sacrifice everything else before we let that happen. Uh, we're we're going to serve the people who uh who pay our bills.
Okay, the next thing I want to talk a little bit about your your community outreach, particularly in North County. A lot of times the folks have no idea of how to do those appeal processes. And so I I'm going to, I'm going to strongly suggest uh that you do more in terms of the outreach, particularly in 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 communities like mine. Because they have no idea how to go about that process. And I think that it's incumbent upon your office uh to make sure that that opportunity um does not escape them simply because they don't know how to do that. So that's just a, that's just to you to make sure you do that. All right?
Um. Uh, so just for for the record, Councilwoman, uh, not only do you have my commitment that I will, you know, two years ago, I think we did, we did one of those town halls in just about every council district. We did two of them in the district that was at the time held by uh Councilwoman Earpy. And she and uh and her staff Jackie were kind enough to help us and to be there with me to help answer those taxpayer questions. So Sarah Siegel, who is here on this WebEx with us, she'll work directly with you. Um, as far as I'm concerned, if you want to do five of them, if you want to blanket your uh your district, then let's do it. And if you want to be there with me, great. And if you want to send me into the fire all by myself, also great. Um, but I extend that offer to you and I extend it to every member of this council. Subject only to COVID and subject to, you know, rules on where we can be in person versus where we have to be remote. I want to do a, of these as possible. Every single uh potentially concerned or even unhappy taxpayer that we take care of. that we take care of upfront and get them the education upfront. Uh, even if it means a few people yell at me at a microphone, I'd rather they yell at me than they yell at my appraisers three months later when it's time to do the appeals because that's how we do the public service.
Okay, a couple of questions I had. One had to do with, uh, you mentioned a couple of positions that were previously funded and I, and I'm looking at your budget item here. Which looked like it was going to be cut a little bit. Um, I'm looking at the personnel expenses. Uh, so tell me about the two positions that I think you're saying, um, that were funded by other departments, but now they're going to be funded in your department? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, there are, there are positions that were previously in the county's GIS department. And you, you were not on the council at this time, so consider yourself lucky not to have had to put up with the, uh, the long history of not great working relations between the GIS department, which is the people who do the pretty maps, and the folks who do the cartography work in the assessor's office, which is more functioning on the nuts and behind the pretty maps. But the executive summary is that because so much of the nuts and bolts work was not getting done at potential risk to the parcel fabric, to the underlying pattern of where the property fits on the map and knowing the plots and the deeds and all of that, it ultimately was just a better solution for me to stop complaining and just start paying for more of those staff to get the work done.
Okay, so that, and that brings me, what you have requested and then what the, uh, the recommendation is, is down a little bit on that. Now, will you be able to do that within the confines of this, uh, I guess this is 11-61813?
I'm sorry.
You see where I am under expend, I'm looking at the budget summary?
On 11, I, I, I don't have that in front of me. Sandy, do you happen to have that in front of you? Let's give Sandy a moment to unmute herself here.
180 of the business plan, maybe that's, maybe that's, should help you a little bit. But I just, you know, with, with a decrease in that money, I just want to make sure that you're able to handle those other two positions even with a decrease in cost. Uh, and the decrease in revenue.
Yeah, I take the point and I, uh, I, I think that everything that we have in front of you, that what's in the recommended budget is consistent with what we actually hope and expect to spend. But if I can take a rain check on that, what I'll do with your permission is I'll look with staff at that specific line item and make sure if we've missed something there, if there's a place where we accidentally might be eating the seed corn, can I just reserve the right to communicate that back to you over the next few days?
I'd appreciate that. And the last question I wanted to ask, because it seems as if you, you, I, I, and I'm gathering this from other departments as well, everybody has their own IT department. You have your own IT department, so we don't have a countywide IT department.
Well, you, there, there is county, there is countywide IT and we do pay for a variety of services from countywide IT. Um, our experience, and in fact, Tom Kendrick, who's here on this call. I mean, Tom was the number two for many years in county IT, working for both, uh, some highly capable, sophisticated people and also one person who I'll delicately say was less so, um, under the prior administration. Um, and so one thing that I think Tom would tell you is that he's an enthusiastic advocate of cooperation and working for the greater good of the county across departmental lines. So while it's true that we've taken over some of the management of our own IT functions, because we have mission-critical systems and we have stuff that we do where we can't wait to put in a support ticket to the help desk. If the Board of Equalization's computers go down in the middle of appeals, the normal, you know, go to county central IT to get support staff, go to Regis, go to who we contract with and they'll be out on Thursday to look at it. That's not acceptable to us, um, because we'd have, we'd lose 1,000 taxpayer hearings before they got it fixed. So we do what we need to do to make sure that we stand up. But I'll tell you that just as a practical matter, it's not an accident that Tom volunteers a lot of his time and a lot of his staff's time to making sure that all the boats stay afloat. Because, uh, you know, we, we do those favors not just because we're nice people, but because when Tom or Sandy or I need to ask for a favor from the administration, when we need to call up Chuck Henderson and say, please, can you help? One of the reasons that Chuck, uh, is inclined to help us is because he knows he'll get the same in return from Tom.
I was just looking at that from a cost-saving perspective that, and I recognize that, you know, you have a, a, a specificity, specificity of issues just for your department, but it seems that, uh, when we're looking at IT for a county, uh, and, and perhaps you're utilizing that, some, some things you're utilizing from the entire department of IT, but, uh, it's, it's kind of like, uh, the insurance and other things. You know, I, I think that some, some of this needs to be reworked, uh, so that we could potentially save some money by, uh, with economies of scale and doing things like that. So that's the end of my questioning, uh, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? All right, I'm not seeing any further comments or questions. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman, for your presentation. Thank you to your staff for being here as well. And, um, thank you for all the ways that your office has stepped up to adapt to the crisis, um, that is still currently underway. We appreciate your hard work and, um, like so many other departments in the county who have stepped up, yours is no exception, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
We appreciate all of your support and your interest in the reassessment process. And I have a, I have a hunch that I'll be in frequent communication with all of you in the months ahead. So don't be shy about using us as a resource when you get those taxpayer questions and we'll all work together to get them answered.
Very well, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have the county counselor's office. Chris, can you do a quick sweep to see if they are here? I see Mickey, I see Jen.
Beth is joining.
Okay. I think we're a little ahead of, of our presumptive schedule, but as long as folks are here, we can go ahead and continue. So we'll sit tight until Beth arrives. Um, I would entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess. Folks might be getting a little stir crazy. Yeah. Um, motion, motion carries. Um, we will take a 10-minute recess and we will reconvene at 2:51.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes.
Can I, who, who made that motion? It was...
And Donaway made the motion seconded by Councilwoman Days.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, Beth. It's 2:51, um, and I see Beth and her team. So Beth, why don't you go ahead and, um, take us through your budget request for the county counselor's office?
Thank you so much and thank you for waiting for me. I was having some WebEx issues, so thank you, I appreciate that. Um, here today, we have, um, Deputy County Counselor Mickey Wagner. And of course, I am the county counselor and I am all in a different situation than usual. Usually I'm here just as your attorney, but today I am glad to be able to speak with you. Um, I sent each of you yesterday afternoon a letter outlining, um, our ask and our expected needs. In that letter, I also, um, highlighted our role and purpose in county government as well as highlighted some recent successes. I think we've had a good year in the county counselor's office. I'm really proud of the work that we are doing and the services that we are providing to the county as a whole. Um, I am, um, I would like to take you a little bit through that information. However, you do have it and I'm so happy to answer any questions either at the end or, um, Madam Chair, if you prefer to interrupt me, that's totally fine with me as well. Um, as you know, we are the, um, the county counselor's office. We truly represent all the legal interests of the county. We do not report to just one branch, but to all the branches. Indeed, that's actually in the charter now. And our office is split into three divisions. Um, and you're very familiar, um, with Jen and Kyle working in the legislative branch. What you might not realize is we also have other attorneys who work behind the scenes to get everything ready for you each week for the, um, council meetings, for your committee meetings, for your budget meetings even. Um, we also have, um, the executive branch on our attorneys who work in that branch. And that, um, you know, that is the, uh, the bigger branch that we have. They have, um, more departments, um, equally important work. And really what I'd like to stress to you all is that we have, as I said in the letter, um, everything from A to Z. We work on legislation, we work on personnel matters, we perform some investigations. Um, we work to protect the community through our work in expungements, through our municipal court prosecutions, through search warrants, problem properties. We institute civil suits. We, uh, we go on the offensive sometimes, not always playing defense when the county is sued, but we also institute civil suits, um, for representing the county's interests. And of course, you're familiar, when the county is sued, we do represent the county in court. But it's not just the lawsuits that you might read about in the papers. It's also, you know, guardian alight of manner matters, garnishments, um, employment litigation, temporary restraining orders. We do lots of things and they don't all make the paper. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But just last week, we had two attorneys argue before a court of appeals. And that is a wonderful opportunity for those two attorneys. For each of them, it was their first argument. And indeed, just before we got on the WebEx today, one of them found out that they were, they won. And there's now an opinion with her name on it, um, for everyone to see. And so we are out there every day in the federal court and in, uh, circuit court and, and indeed in municipal court. Uh, we work on a lot of different things that people don't even know we do. We represent the county and workers' compensation claims filed by county employees. As you just heard, we represent the assessor and appeals with the State Tax Commission. We advise in personnel matters for all aspects of county government, which is not just what you see and hear about, but it starts with advising on what to do, reviewing and writing policies from the get-go, evaluating those personnel actions. Almost every discipline letter that comes, um, from a county department is reviewed by our office or even written by someone in our office. We defend claims by employee who work for the county still or who's, um, are no longer with the county. And we do a lot of administrative work, you know, at the Civil Service Commission or at the Board of Police Commissioners about disciplinary actions. We represent the county in claims made before on the EEOC or the Missouri Human Rights Commission, as well as those lawsuits that you tend to see in the paper that happened in state and federal court. We also represent the county in union negotiations and are at the bargaining table for the county on those things. We are not legislators. We also do, um, thousands and thousands of contracts per year. We advise on procurement matters. We provide guidance for implementing, um, assistance for MWBE matters, for prevailing wage enforcement, for economic development products and, uh, projects, bond work. We help prepare leases. We work with the airport and we, um, help with FAA compliance. Um, we are the shock that helps with the sunshine law. If someone has a question, they come to us. And if something is reported to the Attorney General, we help and often make that reply to the Attorney General and provide that information. We have had an interesting year with, um, the addition of the COVID-19 related work. We have had an immense amount of work put on our office, um, in addition to what we do every day. And what I just told you right now is even a fraction of what we do. Um, literally everything that is happening in county government somehow touches our office and we're there and happy to provide that support. The, um, CARES Act was such a wonderful thing for the county and we were so happy and so proud to help, um, implement a lot of that money going out into the community and helping, um, into, uh, county government, whether it be through PPE or through some of the various grants that have been given. But our office has helped with a lot of that. Um, we've also helped with drafting of public health orders. We've helped with enforcement matters related to the Department of Health orders, including going to federal and state court on those matters. We've related the COVID-19 employment policies and given legal opinions on so many different things that I never dreamed that we would ever be giving opinions on. We have really, uh, you know, flexed our muscles and our brains and brought all of this experience that we have. And in addition, working with outside counsel to have a very solid team to help the county implement this CARES compliance and this funding and all the other COVID-related things. You know, our office is small. We have 23 full-time attorneys. We employ three intermittent attorneys. Uh, we have one paralegal and four secretaries. Considering the amount of work that we do, we are highly productive. Um, on average, our attorneys work, when we've been monitoring this, on average, our attorneys work over 60 hours per week. We have so many attorneys who are working 70 or 80 hours per week, every week, and have not taken a vacation in order to serve the county. Work for the county because they care about government. They care about what we do and there's that call for service. So I'm very proud of what we have been able to do amidst this global pandemic and proud of what we do even before that started and the work that we provide the county. Um, despite the challenges that we've had with working virtually, that we've all had, I'm really proud of the office and the attorneys and people who work in my office for working professionally and for constantly having the county's legal needs in their first and foremost priorities of their, of their, uh, professional careers. Um, with the COVID influx, you know, our office converted to a virtual office, um, without any loss of service. We kept doing what we were doing. And in fact, I, I'm sure you've heard this from other departments, we took this opportunity to, you know, make lemonade out of lemons. We took this opportunity to do better and to find those, um, things that we could be more efficient about. We have, um, first and foremost, we have increased our communication and we have, you know, we don't, we didn't miss a beat. We still communicate through WebEx and phone calls, uh, throughout all the people that we work with in St. Louis County. And we additionally, we've increased communication just within the office through weekly meetings. And in addition, um, Mickey and I have had check-in meetings, making sure that we're able to talk to people in our office and keep up with them and assist them with what they need from a managerial standpoint. Um, these increased during the pandemic and it's really helping to improve, um, employee morale and professional growth as we work through the, the, the work and amount of work that we have going on. We have, um, identified several things to make us more efficient, which have saved the county money, um, through, um, through, I say postage paper and personnel cost savings. For example, we used to have one person who would input, uh, input all of the contracts into a system and it was all done, um, by hand. And their contracts were paper and I'm sure Diane remembers, we would have all the paper and everyone would sign their names with ink. And we've now, that's, that's in DocuSign and that has been incredible savings for, uh, our office. Uh, legislation, that is completely electronic. It used to be, believe it or not, that it was written on paper and then typed up and then reviewed and then all done by paper. Now Jen, um, Frank with her, um, coming in as the, um, legislation manager, she has really taken this to the next level. We are electronic. We have really cut back on the personnel that's needed from a, uh, support staff standpoint and been able to use those people in other, um, ways. And in addition, it's been good since we're all in this virtual WebEx world, we're able to get the legislation to you and out to you in electronic form instead of the paper packets. Municipal court, we look to identify ways to cut back on postage. Uh, people used to email us, believe it or not, all their, their requests for recommendation and everything. They would, they would not email it, they would mail it. And then we'd send it back out, um, snail mail, if you will. Now we have an email address and so we've cut back even having to scan the letters and process all that by hand. Um, our, we are right now, we were in the process of it and we're still continuing to convert all of our documents that we have in our office to an electronic system so that we can access that from home and not have to go to the office to do that. Uh, we don't purchase hard copies of books anymore. We're relying on our existing less law subscription, which has saved money. We installed a doorbell in front of our office, which enabled our receptionist to, um, shift her work responsibilities to other areas. And so we don't have someone sitting there at all times and we are able to still and be able to let people in our office through that doorbell. And we are in the process and I'm very excited about this. And every year, I know you've heard, and I know I said it last year, we need a case management system. I am very, very excited that our county's IT department has been helping us procure, uh, a case management system and work with us to implement that, which is going to... which is going to allow us to be more efficient, to track our workflow, maintain documents, increase organization. And that in itself is going to be a huge morale booster because we're going to be able to see what's going on. Um, Councilman Trakus and Councilwoman Dunaway, I, you probably can't even fathom working in a law office without a case management system. So the fact that we've been able to do it for so long, uh, with, you know, Excel spreadsheets and anything else is, um, kind of a testament to our ability to make it work. But this is going to be a very exciting thing for us. You know, we've also, um, expanded and looked for ways to, um, use our talents that we have in-house and expand our working groups that we have. Last year, we started the sunshine law working group to, uh, discuss things in-house involving the sunshine line. We've expanded that to a, a litigation strategy working group, a boards and commissions working group, um, and a domestic violence working group. And we are working to develop and implement those best practices and look at ways that we can do better so we can serve the county better. We also developed a, uh, very robust in-house CLE program. So every lawyer has to have 15 hours of CLE per year. If you were to go out and buy these, it could be very expensive. We have the 23 attorneys, but, um, so we have, um, 15 of the 15 hours per year, so it's 345 a 20 hour per year. It's a significant time commitment and investment in our attorneys to get that continuing legal education. This year, we really focused on bringing it in-house and we have provided, um, we provided these, these CLEs in-house so that we don't have to go out and pay money for them. In addition, we're able to leverage the talents and the knowledge of the people that we have in our office so that we can get all of these CLEs working together, um, to get them all done. And we've had some really interesting, um, conversations about implicit bias, about implicit bias in the practice of law, about negotiating, about clean energy, civil rights, um, qualified immunity, that we, we, the, the list goes on and on and I highlighted in my letter, but the thing that's really, um, honestly really cool about this, to use a, a really simple word, is that it shows that we can work together to get this done and at the same time, improve our knowledge and save the county a lot of money. You know, we're always willing to go above and beyond. We are willing to do what we can and we want to provide that good service to the county. I will say, when looking at our budget, we did not ask for huge increases. We tried to abide by the, uh, 0% increase in our budget, the, um, 5% cut and the 10%. And we looked at ways to do that. We had two, um, longtime employees unexpectedly retired this year. We did have some extra money. We were hesitant to hire, knowing that we were in this pandemic. We were hesitant to hire, knowing the budget season was coming up and we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have to hire someone and then lay them off. We wanted to know where we were looking at going into the budget season. Um, so we took some of that money in order to pay off those, um, salary savings, to pay off the retirement costs that are associated with that because those weren't previously budgeted. We had a little bit of that extra money to help us get that case management system. And in addition, now that we know where we're at and as we're heading into 2021, we are going to be hiring, uh, an attorney three, uh, to help us, um, expand some of our bandwidth. That will be helpful, but is by no means going to be enough for our office. I am, um, very concerned that the capacity of our office is not sufficient for the workload that we are expecting as we move into next year. And that is a reality perhaps across the county. But because our office is so intricately involved in every facet of what is happening in county government, we need to have a good, solid county councillor's office. We need to build on the time and talent that we have, um, with additional bandwidth. Um, I know that, and I'm expected to, I'll answer some questions about outside counsel, but one of the ways that we are expanding our bandwidth is with outside counsel. It is frankly a necessity for our office and probably will be. There are some things that our office are, it's just not going to be equipped to do because it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to have someone on our staff full-time who is a bond expert. You're not going to be able to, first of all, probably hire somebody, um, just as a bond expert. But then you are not going to be able to get the people who work in the firms who are experts in that field. That's just one example. We also are going to have to hire outside counsel in order to, in order to really, um, be able to do all the work that's necessary to do. Um, you, you all were very, uh, were kind enough and smart enough to give us authority to hire outside counsel to handle the CARES Act and COVID-related things. I will say that there has been a partnership, working with outside counsel on the CARES Act-related items. We work with them on a daily basis. I know that there are times that they are working 24 hours a day providing service to the county and they are working on issues that are very highly, um, uh, specialized. They're working on some serious statutory construction issues and they're working on something that no one's ever done before. And so being able to use that resource has really been helpful for us and been helpful for us to help the community and the county getting those CARES dollars out the door and understanding that we're doing it in a legal way and doing it in a way that will withstand scrutiny if there is a scrutiny through an, or any other such, um, so, uh, oversight. And so that is one example of how, another example, I will say, of how we utilize that outside counsel. Um, there are other instances where we're ethically required to hire outside counsel. For example, if there is a conflict, a legal conflict or an ethical conflict, that's something that as a matter and a practical matter has to happen. But overall, hiring outside counsel is a best practice for whether you're a county, um, inside in-house counsel or you're working for a major big firm. They all hire, um, you know, big businesses hire outside counsel to help with their legal needs. Um, we, we, looking forward, I would like for you all to know that we need more bandwidth. We need more attorneys. We need an investigator to help us investigate our municipal cases and also our cases that are, uh, being litigated with the EEOC or with the, um, in, in state and federal court. We need paralegals. The people we have work really hard, but they're working a lot, a lot of hours, uh, which are not typically expected for someone working in a, in a county councillor's office. And the uptick this year has been real and it's been notable. And I want you to understand that we, while we did not ask for more attorneys in our budget request, I'm so happy to take them and I'm so happy to communicate this to you because it is a necessity. And the reason we did not ask for it is because we were trying to abide by the, um, the ask of the, the 0, 5 and 10%. But please know that it is important to us, um, and anything that you can do to, uh, if I can explain more thoroughly or answer more questions, I'm so happy to do that. And I, I always appreciate the partnership with the council and for all of you listening to me, when I do come to you and ask for, uh, help with these issues, such as outside counsel or requesting funding, because it is important to our office. Um, with that, I'm so happy to answer any questions and all have a long day and I appreciate the work that you're doing and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions from the council? Councilman Fitch, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Beth, you mentioned outside counsel and, and the value they bring to your office. Um, where in your budget, did you budget for outside counsel? Cause I can't find it on here anywhere.
So outside counsel, um, when utilized, um, is generally depending on the matter, but generally will, um, charged to insurance fund. And then it processes through there. Um, uh, the, the CARES and COVID-related outside counsel by ordinance, um, was designated by the council to be paid for out of the CARES funds. That is not budgeted within our budget either.
So the attorneys that we hired, the outside attorneys assist on the Northwest Crossings deal, that came out of the self-insurance fund?
Um, yes, I believe so.
All of those come out of the self-insurance fund with the exception of the CARES Act attorney? Is that, did I hear you right?
That is, um, I'm trying to think of, well, there are some departments, for example, on the assessor's office, they will budget for outside counsel out of their budget. Um, that is, uh, that they have done that in the past. Um, a bond, bond counsel, that is, comes out of a different fund as well. I think the best person asked about what budget it comes from would probably be Mr. Kreidler or, um, Mr. Martin, uh, but that is to my knowledge where those different, the different buckets that would come from.
Okay. And one other question under your insurance line. You must be the only department I've seen so far, at least, that your insurance costs went down. All the other ones went up. Yours went down by a couple thousand dollars. Do you know why yours would have gone down and everyone else's had gone up?
I was not aware that others have gone up. Um, let me pull up my.
Beth, if I can jump in.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Fitch, I believe one of the reasons maybe, as you know, there, there's chargebacks from the self-insurance fund for, um, departments and offices that have had liabilities. And so our department and, or, or our office has not probably had such liabilities, whether it's workers comp or other liabilities, similar to other departments.
Yeah, just to give you some idea, the, the assessor's office, his went up quadruple from what he asked, asked for. And, uh, and like I said, yours is the first I've seen going down. I just didn't know if there was, so you haven't had any, um, exposure as far as dollars go, uh, in this, to the self-insurance fund? Is that why yours would have gone down?
That would be my best guess. That would be my best guess is that we don't, we haven't, we haven't incurred any direct losses on us, you know, workers comp claims, things like that.
And in addition, our office does not directly incur losses. Insurance costs are allocated based on where losses occur.
Okay. And my last question is, uh, Prop P money that your office receives. Is that broken out anywhere in your budget of how much money you're getting from Prop P?
I don't think it's broken out. Um, we definitely have, we do receive Prop P funding. Um,
I'm, I'm interested in the percentage of Prop P funding as it relates to your salaries, because that's where it would be. So for example, 10% of your salary budget comes from Prop P. That's what I'm looking for. Do you have any idea what that would be?
Oh, okay. Mr. Kreidler has just told me you can break it out and pay 84 of the book. We get 4,000, uh, $448,000 of Prop P money. Our office is basically salaries. We've got small budgets for things like Westlaw, um, you know, uh, what, you know, Westlaw, uh, transportation, which would be for things like going to a depot or, um, different, you know, paying for our Barbies. But generally, we are, it is a lot of salaries and, uh, for, you know, the benefits that go with it.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember when the Prop P came into the county councillor's office. Was it 2019?
It was 2019. It was before I came, right before I came, I think it was June of 2019.
So in 2019, your salaries were about 2.2 million and in 2020, it's 2.7 million. Is it fair to say that the majority of that came from Prop P money, that increase? That would be about the amount that Mr. Kreidler said that comes over, about 448,000 roughly.
Math checks out, Councilman Fitch, then that would be fair to say.
That's all I have. Thank you, thank you, manager.
What else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ork, for coming and for your, uh, presentation. Um, I just have some questions. This case management system, I remember talking about that three years ago with your predecessor and my understanding correctly, you still do not have one?
As of today, we do not have one. We are in the process of procuring one through a cooperative purchase. Um, but we still do not have one and we even, we will need, we will need some help getting it up to speed and putting the data once we do get it. But I don't think we'll have it until, um, next year.
Okay. Um, and then with respect to your course, well, before I move on from that, um, you say next year, what, what time next year do you expect to have that?
Uh, I think that we will, I would hope that we would be under contract, um, in January, but I will say we have to input all of the data so that we fully functioning. I'm not actually sure how long that will take.
All right, okay. Um, I'd like to refer you to page, uh, I think it is four of your letter that you sent us. Take a moment to get there.
Of course.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready, thank you.
I have a question, uh, you have a, a chart there or a diagram. Uh, my question has to do with civil litigation.
Yes.
The cases that you cite there, are those cases handled by your office?
We have a few cases that will be included in there, a hand, literally a handful that are handled by outside counsel, but otherwise handled by our office, yes.
Okay, so could, just let's take this year, for instance, you indicate 718 cases. Just so we have a good sense of it, how many of those cases, and an estimate will be fine, were handled outside of your office?
I think maybe five were, five or six handled outside our office.
And that's what I thought. So then it certainly at least 700 cases were handled by your office.
Correct.
And then just so we can keep context here, how many lawyers are in your office?
23 plus three intermittent, so part-time.
So 23 lawyers plus a couple part-timers handled 710 cases or thereabouts.
Yes.
Now, um, I'd like you to, um, educate us on the comparative reality of your office with some counterparts. Let's start with the city of St. Louis. If you know, how many attorneys are in the city councillor's office?
I believe it's roughly double what we have.
Okay, so that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50.
Correct.
Okay. And the number of citizens for the record in the city is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 300,000. And we have probably three times that in the county. Moving on to St. Charles County, are you familiar with, do you know the number of, uh, attorneys in the county councillor's office in St. Charles County?
I believe they're in the twen-, I believe they have, uh, in the twenties.
Okay. From a, um, i- if you know, a comparative standpoint of similar counties, meaning population-wise, 900,000 to a million residents, um, what's the typical county councillor's office staff look like? If you know the answer to that, you may not.
So it's, it's sometimes hard to compare apples to oranges because different county councillors' offices do different things. However, I will say this, I was on a, a panel speaking with law students from St. Louis University and also a school in Chicago. And it was a panel of government attorneys and there was someone from, um, Cook County in Chicago. Their county attorney's office. It could have knocked me over when this woman said that they have 200 attorneys in their office. I understand Chicago is a little bit bigger than we are, but that is a lot more attorneys. I believe that we are underfunded and we are definitely smaller with our counterparts.
Now, um, continuing in that line, in a perfect world, what would be a reasonably appropriate staff for your office, meaning number of attorneys, paralegals and investigators?
Without budget constraints?
Yes.
I think we would, at a minimum, need to double the amount of our attorneys. We would need four or five investigators. We would need, um, probably 10 more paralegals.
How many paralegals?
Probably 10 more.
And then, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 lawyers?
Yes.
Okay. Um, before I, I pursue that further, I want to get also a sense and so people have context and perspective. Um, what's the starting salary for an entry-level attorney in your office?
I believe we start at $61,000.
And in terms of, um, competitors, let's say we're talking about a medium-sized, let's, let's, let's compare apples to apples. Let's say we take a small law firm of 20- Let's say we take a small law firm of 25 lawyers. What would be your best estimate of the starting salary for a new lawyer right out of law school, going to work for a law firm that does civil litigation um, in this, in the St. Louis metropolitan area that has 25 lawyers?
It, that, it's a tough question. Is the expectation to work 40 hours a week, the expectation 60 hours a week? I mean, I, I think it just depends. I would say probably around the neighborhood of $90,000 to $100,000.
Okay, that was my point. Um, i- i- in terms of your office's ability to compete with similar-sized peers, for lack of a better way to put it, or counterparts. Believe, I read somewhere or someone told me that you recently, uh, had, uh, posting or a notice for job openings for attorneys in your office. How many, um, if you know, how many individuals accessed or at least, um, reviewed your, your notice?
So we have an, currently, and it closed yesterday or Sunday night, um, an attorney three opening. So that's an attorney with five years of experience at a minimum. Um, so not someone who's right out of law school, someone with five years of experience at a minimum. And we had, uh, on NeoGov, which is the, the portal that you use, um, 1,200 hits on that, that posting.
And how, out of 1,200 hits or views, how many applications, um, do you receive?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And why do you suppose out of 1,200 hits, you only received 16 applications? What's your opinion on?
Sixteen applications. I would say 13 people are qualified based on the number of years' experience necessary. Um, I think one of the driving factors is because we pay for that spot a starting salary, um, $85,000, which is way below market average for someone who has experience, uh, whether in transactional or litigation work.
The reason I use that example, I mean, how competitive is, is your office, whether it's attorney three or an entry-level or an experienced lawyer beyond attorney three? How competitive are your salaries with respect to, um, counterparts, um, in terms of the market?
Well, there, if you're looking strictly at money and salaries, they're, they're not very competitive. They're not at all.
Okay. Now, um, obviously, uh, doubling the size of your office in, in essence, is what you're saying, is probably not something that's going to happen, um, next year, but on an incremental basis, as best as you're able to tell us, how, uh, what would you recommend in terms of, um, the council over a period of time, and by that I mean years? Addressing this, this shortage problem that you have with respect to your staffing, both in terms of number and in compensation?
Well, to make us competitive, you know, look, St. Louis County is, is a wonderful place to work. And the people who work in our office are, um, driven by the dedication to service. They want to work for the public good, and that's why they're here. And they, I think we have come to a point where that's nice, and the people who work as attorneys for the county should be compensated appropriately. Um, I think that we would need to increase the salaries across the board for new attorneys, um, as well as our experienced attorneys. But that $61,000 starting entry point, that is a, that is a tough sell for someone, especially right now when we're working these hours. And then they see the firm and work the same hours, and if you go to work at a, a big firm, you know, you can make $140,000 your first, your first year out of law school with no training whatsoever. And so to be competitive in that market, um, we have the benefit that we are St. Louis County and we are a wonderful place to work, and so that's the best thing we have going for us. Putting some money behind that would also be helpful. In addition, knowing that there was a fully-staffed office that was able to fully support the, uh, the need and the different, um, legal things that we do, I think we should start a, you know, almost a, a system and a plan, as you suggested, Councilwoman Trigus, of, you know, if I could have five attorneys for next year, that would be a great start. If we could have some support staff to go along with them, that would be an, a wonderful way to get this moving. And then incrementally increase it as, uh, the, the years go forward. I know that, um, that is a big ask, but that is something that, that would be important. And I will also say, not just a matter of hiring, but a matter of the people who already work in the office and are here and have dedicated their time and their talents to St. Louis County. Moving them a pay range up would be helpful, if you could increase their salaries as well. Um, that way you can retain talent that you have. You put a lot of investment into training people. And we've hired some wonderful attorneys over this past year that we have, the past few years, that we've dedicated time and, and energy into training them, and keeping them and retaining them is also key to, uh, my plan for a very high-functioning, successful county councillor's office.
Okay, and I'm almost done. Um, with respect to, um, a plan, would, would a incremental, incremental increase on an annual basis over five years, um, achievable, do you think, in terms of getting your office up to speed? Say, let's say we pick five new lawyers every year for five years, along with other staff?
That would be, um, that would be wonderful, yes. That would, that would go a long way to making sure that we are providing the best service.
And then last question, as that occurs, if it were to occur, that incremental increase leading to a fully-staffed office at the end of five years, would that have any impact on the retention of outside counsel?
I think it would. Um, there are always going to be times that we need to hire outside counsel.
I understand that.
You know, there's going to be a conflict or there's going to be something very highly specialized. But yes, I think that that would be, um, that, that would definitely have a, play a factor, because we would have that bandwidth. I need them just for bandwidth. We would have that bandwidth built in.
So it'd be fair to say that the need for outside counsel would decrease?
Yes, I believe so.
And so that would be a savings, um, over time to the county?
Abs- absolutely. I, I see it as an investment to the county.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair. I appreciate your patience with me. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Oring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Trigus. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Dan.
Thank you. Uh, Beth, I want you to go back and talk about your self-insurance fund and, and you're saying that that is what so far has been paying the outside counsel. Uh, I do recall in the Wildhaven case, I believe we utilized that, or did we not use the self-insurance fund, but it wasn't sufficient? Is, is that correct, or do I have that right? Because I believe at some point it was said that we had to bond out to pay the remaining settlement. So did that mean that we did not have enough in the self-insurance fund, or we're capped at how much we can, what, what is the situation?
I think that is a good question for the Department of Administration. I think that I'm qualified to speak on the functionality of how the self-insurance fund works. Um, but I, I, I do know that, being, you know, helping prepare the legislation or whatnot, there were bonds that were, um, obtained to help pay that, that settlement, yes.
But I remem, I, I thought I heard you say that any outside counsel was paid for through the self-insurance fund. Is that not what you said?
Correct. But the, the fund is replenished. I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of administration, because I don't think I'm going to do it, uh, do it justice. I think that's a great question for, for Todd Martin, but that, that is part of the, the budget process is replenishing that fund.
Okay. So you indicated that you had 718 cases that your department handled last year?
That's the estimated for this year.
Okay, and you said five of those were outside, you had to utilize outside counsel for that?
Uh, for litigation matters, I believe it is a handful, correct?
Okay, so now can you give me a ballpark figure as to how much the five, uh, uh, cost versus the 718?
I can give that to you. I, I can give you, um, ca, uh, expenditures. I don't have that on hand, but I, that's something I can definitely get for you.
Okay, I'll put a note on, an asterisk on that one, okay? Uh, it, you indicated that you had 23 full-time. I'm looking at the budget summary in the business plan. It looks like, um, you've asked for 35 or you have 35? You have authorized positions 35?
Well, we have some that are not filled right now, but then that also includes, um, the, uh, support staff as well.
Okay, so the 23 are just the attorneys, plus the three-part-time? And the balance of that is administrative people?
We have one paralegal and four secretaries.
Okay. Okay, uh, you also indicated about performing investigations as one of your, your, um, your duties there. Uh, what kinds of investigation, because we've had kind of gone back and forth with the, uh, notion that we can or we cannot have a, a investigation. So I'm not, I'm not asking you to tell me what the investigations were, but give me some idea about that, if you could?
Sure, personnel matters is something that we need to look into in order to determine, you know, from a legal standpoint, how do we best defend the county? Um, and, and determine facts.
Okay. Okay, um, and I, I just have one other one, and I, we, um, you know, we were interested in looking at the other, um, outside people, other jurisdictions, if you will, governmental employees, uh, governmental law departments. And you mentioned that the St. Louis City had about 60 people in there. Is that what you said?
Um, I think they have in the 40s, 40 to 50.
So they have 40 attorneys. I'm, I'm going with just attorneys.
Attorneys, yes.
So 40 is attorneys. Do you know, uh, do you know if they utilize outside counsel?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I, I think that they use it. I don't know. I would have to, I would have to talk with the, um, the acting county councillor to know exactly what they're doing these days. I don't know.
Okay. And St. Charles County was also mentioned as, uh, another, uh, department that was, uh, staffed, uh, more than we were. Do they utilize outside counsel?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I, I do understand your, um, your concern with the numbers that you have. Uh, the, the oldest, not the oldest, I'm, I don't want to mean in age, but the lawyer with the most experience in your department, it has been there how many years?
I'm going to defer to Mickey. We've had some retirements over the past year, so.
So currently, the one that's most experienced attorney is, is, how many years has that person had?
I believe, um, it'll, 40 years this year. I believe you're accurate. Forty, maybe 40 years in 2021.
Okay, 40 years. Well, I, I, and I don't, I do understand the comparisons that you're trying to make with, uh, you say law firms. Uh, we are a governmental body. We are, we do public service is what we do, and we're not in comparison, uh, with, with, uh, perhaps a, a law firm, uh, a Brian Cave, if you will, uh, we, we are not in that caliber, and I think you're comparing apples to oranges when we do that. So, uh, knowing that, uh, you know, you would really like to have more attorneys, we understand that, but to make a comparison to, uh, a law firm, I, 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 I think that's, uh, that's, you know, again, apples to oranges. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I address that?
Oh.
Thank you. Uh, I, I, to some extent, I would agree to you that we are not, um, we're not trying to compare to Brian Cave. Couple of things about that. The starting salary at Brian Cave is probably more than our highest salary in our entire office. Second of all.
Can tell you what it is. For a first-year associate, right out of law school, we pay $140,000 a year.
Okay, there, thank you. There are very few people in our office who make more than that. I will also say that we, there were times when people in our office worked 40 hours a week. Now our average is 60, and we have several who are working 70 hours a week, um, to get the work done. And so, and that's consistently, that is just week after week. And so that is something that I'm very cognizant. So while at one point in time, we might have said it was apples to oranges, I think there are some things that we can, um, we can parallels that we can draw now. I will also say the person in our office with the 40 years' experience makes less than that year attorney at the big law firms. So that is a, another reality, and look, we are very proud public servants, and you are absolutely right, we are public servants. However, in order for us to be competitive and to retain, um, people and to hire people, we, we do need to be competitive in the legal market, which is just the reality of what it is.
Sorry, your total office budget is what?
It is four, right, um, $4.1 million.
$4.1 million. And, um, I, I want you to check the numbers in St. Charles County, because I'm looking at, at something that says that they have a $1.5 million uh, budget plus $30 for outside counsel. And they're asking for one new attorney for their, their department. So, uh, just make sure we, you know, we're all talking. Yeah, no, we're all talking the same thing.
I don't, I, um, I don't have as close a relationship with them as I do with, um, St. Louis City, but I can definitely look into that. I will also say one thing that people think is that we get paid overtime. We do not. We don't get bonuses. We don't get paid overtime. There's no time and a half for our department. So that's something I think it's important for you to understand as well.
Okay, I, I think that, uh, that's my last question, but as we, as we look forward to that, I think that, yeah, we need to understand where we are. Uh, the last, oh yes, then I did want to ask, um, how many men and how many women in your department?
That will take some, some thinking, um.
You can get back to them later. Uh, the other.
I know it's more women. I know we're women-heavy. We're more women, but I, I'll have to, I'll have to email you that.
Okay, and I, I, uh, and I just, as a statement, uh, you know that I have not been, uh, uh, supportive of outside counsel. Um, and I, I say that in, in, uh, and I want to couch that in these terms that, you know, there has not been, as, as come to this council that I have been aware of, of any kind of RFP for services for outside counsel, and I did mention that to you, which means that we're going to get the same person. And I was concerned about the lack of diversity with your outside counsel process, and I'm not sure about the diversity even in your office. I did not ask that question. You might want to include that in your, um, your response to me about the men and women. But I, I think it's important that, um, we make sure that we do have some kind of diversity. You know, everybody's talking about DEI. But until you actually put bodies in place where you have people of minority descent, uh, uh, then, you know, it's just talking. And so that's the reason that a lot of that is, is, is a pushback for me, because I would like to see some diversity in many of these offices that we don't have in St. Louis County at this point. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else? All right, I am seeing no further questions or comments. Um, thank you very much, Beth, um, and, and thank you to you and your team, um, not just for being here for today, but all of the hard work that you all put in every day. Um, we really appreciate it and know that you are putting in even more again because of the crisis that we continue to be in. So it is, it does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Um, our final budget presentation for today will be from the Parks Department. Um, I see Mr. Tom Ott here.
Hi there.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Are you ready?
I'm ready if you are, unless you need to take a quick break.
Um, I think we can keep going.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Tom Ott. I'm the director for the Park Department. Also representing the Park Department today is June Bernaw, our fiscal manager, and Carolyn Bailey, our accountant three. So, I don't know, June, can you share?
Okay, June, you should be able to share now.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So real quickly, this is our, this is kind of an introduction sheet for us, but this is the cover of the Fall Activity Guide as well. And that's our new slogan, Adventure in Every Acre. They were using now to help promote the Park Department. We can go to the next slides. I'd like to talk about the Park Department uh mission statement. The Park Department. The Department of Parks and Recreation provides high-quality parks, facilities, and recreation services that enhance residents' lives through the responsible and effective management of resources. Want to say too, the Park Department is seventy years old this year with the adoption of the charter in nineteen fifty. All populations and demographics benefit from the seventy-three parks that comprise the twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-five acres in Saint Louis County. Our regional park system continues to provide services that improve and enhance the quality of life for all citizens. Our department will continue to focus on the county executives' priority areas and implement strategies to support the county in meeting those objectives. The Park Department offers opportunities to serve every age group, income level, and interest of our citizens. In addition to the seventy-three parks, we have six recreation complexes, six cultural sites, one hundred and sixty-six miles of trails. Sixty-five athletic fields, forty-four playgrounds, seventy-eight picnic shelters, eighty-seven restroom buildings. Five hundred and eighty-nine acres of lakes, a dog park, a state-of-the-art soccer complex, and an animal farm. Go to slide two. Thank you, June. So the recommended budget. Parks and Recreation is thirty million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. This is a decrease of four point nine million or thirteen point eight percent from the twenty-twenty revised budget. The twenty-twenty budget figure was higher than what we normally budget due to the capital improvements we made this year. Some of those include three new restrooms at Spanish Lake, Creeve Core, and Mathilda Parks. A new marquee sign replacement at the North County Rec Center. A playground resurfacing project at Saint Vincent Park. The Greensfelder Recreation Complex Center design. Soccer park lighting for two fields, the lakeside building demolition. The Creeve Core Wetland mitigation project, various roof repairs and replacements at the Afton Community Center. And at Fals Park, the painting of the Jarville and Terry buildings at Queenie Park. HVAC replacement at the Potter Magazine Museum in Jefferson Barracks. Personnel costs comprise sixty percent of the budget for five hundred and eighty-three positions. That's three hundred and forty-two point five full-time equivalents. The operating expenses account for thirty-six point four percent and capital expenses account for three point five percent of the recommended budget. The Park Department is not in the general fund. Currently, our estimated available funds for twenty twenty-one are expected to be thirty-five point two million dollars. The Park Department changes in twenty twenty-one due to the loss of sales, taxes, and park revenue fees from the effects of COVID-nineteen. Due to this loss of funding, a temporary reduction in the number of capital improvement projects and capital equipment purchases in twenty twenty-one is being recommended. Some of the renovation and replacement projects identified in our five-year capital improvement plan, such as restrooms and playgrounds. Have been pushed back a couple of years. The department set a goal of thirty-one million for twenty twenty-one to exist with it. To exist within the expected revenues and be able to provide services to our citizens and maintain a fund balance. The department is planning to renovate the Greensfelder Recreation Complex in twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The design for this project was currently funded in twenty twenty and will be concluded before the end of the year. The county has a bonding program that will include the Greensfelder Rec Complex. We will be coming to the county council to appropriate the debt service payment in early twenty twenty-one. We plan to use the payment that is currently going to the Museum of Transportation. Through a previous five-year agreement to finance our debt service payment each year. That payment to the museum is in its last year in twenty twenty-one, and we will have sufficient funds in our unappropriate balance to cover the first-year payment. Some other significant changes in the twenty twenty-one budget includes the hard-bend levy tax, which more than doubled from twenty twenty to a cost of four hundred and four thousand. Due to the casino litigation and a new stormwater assessment tax for a pump station to help alleviate flooding. We are budgeting an additional two hundred and ten thousand dollars in vehicle maintenance and repair due to an aging fleet. And an additional two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in construction materials and supplies to address additional in-house projects with our trade staff. Some of these projects that will be part of our, some of those projects will be part of our match for a grant that we have, which I'll speak about a little bit. Or for items identified in our master plan. Our budget request highlights include our staffing. Again, our total salary infringes total eighteen point five million, which comprises sixty percent of our budget. That includes two hundred and forty-four full-time, three hundred and thirty, thirty-two part-time, and seven intermittent staff. Our F T U of three hundred and forty-two point five is one less than our current twenty twenty budget. Go to slide three, June. Thank you. So our projects, our twenty twenty-one C I P list we are submitting is a total of one hundred and seventy-seven. Projects for the next five years. There are fifteen projects scheduled for twenty twenty-one, and of these four are funded by Great Rivers Greenway. The list of projects for twenty twenty-one is a reduction from what was initially being planned at the beginning of the year. This reduced list is due to the impact that COVID-nineteen has had uh to date on our revenue sources. The reduction of revenues has made us relook at our five-year C I P list and shift some of those projects further out. Even with a reduced budget for twenty twenty-one, our focus moving forward is to address items identified in our master plan that was completed in two thousand and eighteen. Some of the twenty twenty-one pros projects on the list include. Spanish Lake Park entrance renovation along with trail improvements, including a neighborhood trail connection for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is a matching grant up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Playground resurfacing projects at four playgrounds at Creeve Core, Love, McDonald, and Susan Parks for two hundred and ten thousand. Adding shade structures to the LeMay Playground and replacing safety surface on the fitness equipment using community development block grant funds for ninety-nine thousand dollars. Renovating the LeMay Park restroom that was damaged from fire for a one hundred and fifty thousand. Installing a new sidewalk at Fals Park from Olive Street Road to the Music School for thirty thousand. A new HVAC unit at the Bissell House for twenty thousand. And partnering with Great Rivers Greenway for two point six million worth of trail improvements at Grants Trail, LeMay Park, and Saint Vincent. Our next slide is our capital equipment purchases. This includes purchases of five mowers, four salt spreaders, four trucks. One Ranger vehicle with an in-car computer, a pool filtration system, and a plotter printer for our office for a total of almost six hundred thousand dollars. For cost-saving measures uh for the upcoming year, currently, the Park Department Activity Guide is published twice a year. Is offered online and hard copies are available at our facilities. We will be eliminating the printing of the hard copies and provide the online version only at this time. The cost savings for this measure are anticipated to be twenty thousand per year. An item we discussed eliminating but have not moved forward at this time is the closing of the Kennedy Pool in South County. While this pool is important to our residents, it is outdated being forty-five years old. We had to shut down the pool shortly after opening this year due to repairs exceeding forty thousand dollars. Currently, we have not made the repairs and are waiting to see how the pandemic affects what we can offer next year. Closing this facility would save one hundred thousand dollars per year, but it would also reduce our revenues by fifty thousand. The department is reducing its spending on the marketing of its programs. With current capacities being reduced due to COVID-nineteen, we are meeting public demand. And estimate a cost savings in twenty twenty of fifty thousand dollars. We will continue our, we will increase our cost savings in twenty twenty-one as long as the pandemic keeps us in the current state of what we can offer. Currently, we are working to replace three outdated restroom buildings, as I mentioned earlier, at Creeve Core, Spanish Lake, and Mathilda Park. And hook up to M S D at a fourth park at Olendorf Park in South County. Currently, two of these facilities are closed, which is causing us to rent portable restrooms. Once completed, these facilities will have improved efficiencies, thereby reducing our utility and maintenance costs. And the restrooms we are purchasing are prefab units, which cost significantly less at a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars a year. Versus more than double that for a traditionally constructed facility. Under our strategic priorities, our volunteer program. We are proud of our volunteer program. The Park Department reduces costs and enhances public relations by using volunteers through our various programs such as Trail Watch. Master Gardeners, AmeriCorps, Trail Cruises, and Museum Docents. The Park Department had sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight volunteer hours in twenty nineteen. Volunteers became, become involved in a variety of programs and events that we offer. The volunteer program started in nineteen ninety-six and continues to offer residents opportunities to become involved in their community. While assisting the Park Department. For our partnerships, the Park Department has always partnered with other agencies locally to enhance our services offered to our residents. Currently, we are partnering with Great Rivers Greenway for trail improvements in twenty twenty-one for two point six million. We have a community assistance program agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation whereby they help manage eleven of our lakes. This agreement allows for fish stocking and provides equipment such as docks, aeration systems, fish structure. And capital improvement projects for citizen enjoyment. We have partnered with local municipalities to lease, operate, and maintain park properties to provide recreational services to those in the community. We also partner with Operation Food Search during the summer to help provide meals to children under the age of eighteen. Other agencies we have partnered with include the Saint Louis County Library and other county departments. The Park Department has had a park foundation since two thousand and fifteen to help with providing new recreational opportunities throughout the county. Projects in twenty twenty included new exercise and playground equipment along the Dennis Shick Trail in Jefferson Barracks Park. New entrance and exit gates at Lone Elk Park and the recent purchase of some livestock livestock at Susan Park. And finally, under leases and contracts, the Park Department manages leases and contracts with vendors for athletic field use. Concessions and special land uses in order to reduce expenses, increase revenues, and provide recreational opportunities. The department manages dozens of leases to expand recreational opportunities for our citizens. And our leases provide residents opportunities to operate businesses out of our facilities and reduce our overhead costs. Some noteworthy items in our twenty twenty-one budget include. Uh two grants. We've been awarded two grants that we will use in twenty twenty-one to make improvements in two of our parks. A matching grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as I mentioned, for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Will be used at Spanish Lake Park to improve neighborhood trail connections, interior trails, and renovate the park entrance. A second grant for ninety-nine thousand from the community development block grant funds will be used for shade structures and a resurfacing project in LeMay Park. We will continue to pursue future grants and work with the Saint Louis County Park Foundation to make park improvements. Another item I want to address um is fees. The Park Department has not had any significant fee schedule changes since two thousand and fifteen. We made some minor adjustments to provide consistency with the fee, within the fee schedule in late twenty nineteen. Our cost-provided services has grown with, due to minimum wage increases. We have reviewed our current fees and did a market study to see where we are in the local community. The fee schedule changes we are proposing have not seen an increase since two thousand and fourteen or longer. And the fee changes we are proposing will align us more closely with the local offerings of other park agencies. This is something you'll be seeing legislation on in the next couple of weeks. Um something I want to mention that was originally scheduled, we were gonna do in twenty twenty-one, but we were actually able to complete this fall. We had a donation um of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. From uh a kindergarten teacher who actually walked in Creeve Core Park every day. In her estate plan, she left us this money and uh the estate planner came and met with us. And she loved the playground and exercise equipment project that we had slated for Creeve Core, so we used that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to complete that project. To install additional exercise and playground equipment along the trail, along the lake. Um that was just finished here in the last week due to the the warm weather we were having. We were able to get the rubberized surface in place. We will continue to work with the Park Foundation to identify projects that they can assist with as well. I will say that the Park Department looks forward to returning to pre-COVID times when we can have more people in our facilities and return to normal programming. We are the host site for the Midwest Regional Soccer Championships in June twenty twenty-one. Which includes more than two hundred and twenty teams from fourteen states. This six-day event is expected to generate a local economic impact of more than ten million dollars. And that source is from the Saint Louis Sports Commission and the U S So- Youth Soccer Association. I want to close with, we did see a general increase in park usage this year with people using our trails. The Park Department provided some welcome relief to our citizens during this time. The increase in park visitation this year is a trend for many park agencies throughout the United States. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, but I also want to extend an invitation to all of you to view any of the parks within your local council districts. Um anytime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. At this time, I will um invite the council to offer any questions or comments they have for you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. And I was out at Queenie Park on Saturday to observe the deer hunt. Um are there, and one of the questions I did, I have about that is, are there any costs to Saint Louis County? Uh for those deer hunts? Uh I didn't see anything specifically mentioned in your budget. Like, I noticed there are quite a few park rangers out there. Are there overtime, any kind of costs like that?
So, right now, we are staffing the park with a ranger uh each day of the hunt. So we've got that, that one labor cost. There is one ranger in each of those four parks. And then we had signage that we developed in-house this year in our own sign shop. So, but that's signage that we'll be able to store away and pull out for next year if we decide to do this again.
And there were a ton of people out in that park having a good time. It's really enjoyable for me to be able to see people enjoying their parks that way. So, thank you for the great work that you all do, and I didn't have any questions about your budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Days.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom, for your presentation as well. Um yeah, with the the. Stay-at-home orders and all those kind of things, the parks have become a very important part in us getting out and just kind of enjoying. Uh you know, the time outside. I did have one question uh that I wanted to ask you about the historian. Is the, is the historian under your budget, is that different than um the the um, what is the other? Historic sites manager. Are those two different things?
Currently, Esley Hamilton was our historian, and that was his title. Esley is still with us as a volunteer. We did combine the historian and created a new historic sites manager, so that person is now in a dual role. Of being historian and historic sites manager.
Okay, okay, that was my question. Um all right, I appreciate that. But again, good job and um, you know, the park, the ones that. Look great. I was hoping no one would mention it, but they had to do that anyway. So, thank you so much for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Mr. Ott, um. What's your estimated cost to repair, renovate, or replace the pool at the Kennedy Rec Center?
Well, I will tell you that we spent four million dollars on the aquatic center at the North County Rec Center in twenty fifteen.
So. My question, my question was, how much is your projected cost to repair? Um or replace the pool at the Kennedy Rec Center?
So the. The projected repair right now is forty thousand dollars.
Okay, now your budget this year is thirty million dollars. Is that right?
Thirty point nine. Yes, sir.
So um, you're going to save forty thousand dollars at the expense of South County residents out of a thirty million dollar budget? Is that what you're proposing?
I I'm saying that that is one item that we were looking at. I did not say that we would necessarily have to do that. It's an item we were asked to look at, cost-saving measures going forward, being that that's a forty-five-year-old facility. Uh and a flat-water pool that does not get as much attendance as the pool at the pavilion at LeMay. That's something that we may want to look at. I'm more than happy to have a discussion with you about that. To come up with a true cost estimate, it would depend on what we would go back at that facility with. What kind of an aquatic center would be?
That's fine. I I would suggest you look other, uh otherwise for uh savings. I'm not gonna. Sit by and watch you close that pool to save forty thousand dollars, lose fifty thousand dollars in res- res- revenue. In a budget you're proposing at thirty-one million dollars. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? All right, I'm not hearing any other takers. Um Tom, much. All right. I'm not hearing any other takers. Um, Tom, much appreciation to you and your team for all that you do every day. I echo everyone's appreciation for county parks. I think it's one of the biggest assets here in St. Louis County, and so does my kid, who loves the Tillis Park Playground. And we have been happy to revisit that as it's been open again. So, um, thank you very much. And looking forward to Winter Wonderland this year, too. Should be a good way for people to enjoy the holidays without, um, needing to get out of their car or leave, you know, uh, leave into a situation where they might not be, uh, safe and healthy. So glad we have that built in already.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Um, we have concluded our budget presentation for this afternoon, our budget presentations for this afternoon. Um, next on our agenda, I believe, is, um, public comments. And I think we have one. Is that true, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. We have one public comment.
All right. Go ahead and, and read the comment.
The comment is from Tom Sullivan. "I would urge the council to carefully consider the budget for the county councillor's office. There are many questions about how the office is run. In particular, it is difficult to understand why outside law firms are needed so often. Lewis Rice is handling the situation with the developers of the old Northwest Plaza. An agreement was signed in February to go into negotiations, and various maneuvering went on, but nothing has happened for months. What's going on? Orwick refuses to say. Since Ms. Orwick has been county councillor, incompetence has been the hallmark of the office. The mishandling of the Wild Haber case is costing taxpayers fifteen million dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are spent with law firms for work the county councillor's office should be able to handle. Given the size of county government, there will always be discrimination cases. There should be at least one competent lawyer to handle them. The Sunshine Law is regularly violated by county government, but the county councillor is silent. The CARES Committee has totally ignored the law. Ms. Orwick tried to silence Troy Doyle, not for any legal reason, but because he might say something critical of Sam Page. The advice to the council on how to handle emergency legislation was completely wrong. Public dollars were used to promote the Page campaign. Even the Post Dispatch editorial page was critical, but not a word from Beth Orwick. Taxpayers have not been getting their money's worth from the county councillor's office. The council should see that they do. Thank you for listening to my comments."
All right. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Um, any further comments or discussion from the council?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. See you all at six-thirty for our regular meeting. Take care.